Want to be all right? All right, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the May 17th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Wang, would you please lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to this life in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on... Can you do this wrong? ...to the justice for all.
Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with white request to speak cards. The request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk on my right prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers who would like to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write item A on your card. Or if you wish to speak on a specific item on the agenda, please write the agenda item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. And the clock is on my right for you to monitor your time. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to feel uncomfortable, and so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful to all speakers. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called upon by the chair and come forward to the microphone and please state your name for the record. Today, we have four items on the agenda, and that includes one presentation and three regular agenda items. At this time, I will take up the presentations by the public on matter not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. And I do not have any request to speak, okay? The next item is correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commission Secretary. Mr. Tilly, do you have any? Mr. Tilly?
No correspondence tonight, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there any disclosure of exportate communications among the commissioners? To my right? To my left? None? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration and approval of the minutes from the April 7th Commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry, let me go back again. This is for the April 21st Commission meeting. Let me go back again and...
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Sternfeld's moved, and Commissioner Tumber's seconds, and all in favor signaled by saying...
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, wait a minute.
You went back to April.
I went back to April...
Is that because you guys couldn't approve them?
Oh, we're on May 19th here, sorry. I've got way too many agendas in front of me. Let me go back to May 5th Commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, okay. And all in favor signaled by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? We have three abstentions. We need a...
No, two minutes.
Three abstentions and three that have approved.
So, we will...
I think we need a roll call.
Shall we table this to the next meeting?
Or you could table it to the next meeting. Do you only have three yes votes? Is that the problem?
Three yes votes, yes.
Yeah, you need to table it then.
We need to table it. We'll table this to the next meeting. We could've started off with that, all right.
I knew that answer. I knew that answer.
Okay, and now we have a presentation on the Southport Levy Improvement Project. Mr. Faben is...
Yes, our flood protection manager is joining us once again tonight to present this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Greg Faben. As Mr. Tilly said, I'm the flood protection manager for the city of West Sacramento. I wear a couple of hats. West Sacramento employee, longtime West Sacramento employee, but I also serve and support the West Sacramento area flood control agency. The city provides the administrative support for that agency, so in that respect, I wear a couple of hats. So tonight, I wanted to do a presentation and give you guys an update on the Southport Levy Improvement Project. But first, I wanted to give a little bit of background. As I learned at the last Commission meeting, that not everybody's very familiar with the flood program that the city and with Safeguard are undertaking, so I thought I'd give a little bit of background about that program, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. As I'm sure most, if not all of you are aware, the city can be completely surrounded by water during winter months. We've got the Sacramento River to the north and east of us, the Sacramento Bypass to the north, the Yolo Bypass to the west, and the city is then further bisected by the Deepwater Ship Channel. So during high water events, we can have water on all sides of the city as well as internal to the city that can provide some risk for flooding. All in all, the total levy miles that make up the city's levy system is pretty close to 50. It's on the order of 52, 53 miles of levies that make up our system. In relation to the bigger picture, the Sacramento River flood control system, West Sacramento kind of lies sort of near the bottom of that flood control system, which is rivers and tributaries, bypasses. In other words, it's a much larger flood control system, and we really lie kind of at the confluence of both the Sacramento streams and the American River streams. So we're right at the apex of where during heavy rain events or during the winter, and so obviously flooding is, or excuse me, the risk of flooding is extremely important for the city. So to combat those problems, the city and with Safeguard developed the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program, in the goal of which to provide 200-year level of protection for the city, primarily through two joint efforts. The first effort is partnering with the state and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to implement a federal project known as the General Reevaluation Report to improve the entire levy system. And the second of those joint efforts was to implement early flood risk reduction projects and partnering with the state in advance of ultimate federal approval and the ultimate federal project. So the first joint effort with the Corps takes some time to get through that process and to implement, so in advance of that, we partnered with the state to do early implementation The first of the joint efforts was the West Sacramento General Reevaluation Report. That study was about eight years in the making. That study just completed last month with the execution of what's called the Chief of Engineers Report, and that's executed by the headquarters for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Huge milestone at the completion of that report. Next steps after the execution of that report is submission of that West Sacramento project to Congress for ultimate authorization. And as it stands right now, both the Senate and the House have received our projects and are recommending them for Water Resource Development Act bill in 2016, and that's where, once that bill is approved, we will receive the official congressional federal authorization for our West Sacramento project. So that then sets the stage for federal appropriations and for the Army Corps to come in and continue to design and construct the improvements to the remainder of the West Sacramento levy system. But the second of those joint efforts, which is now leading us to our projects, are these early implementation projects that with Safeguard has undertaken in partnership with the state. So we've completed three early implementation projects to date. Ice Street, and they were all in the north area of the city. We have the Ice Street project that was completed in 2008 of the CHP Academy reach that was completed in 2011, and then also the Rivers project that was also completed in 2011. There were also a couple of other projects that were done by the Corps. They were known as bank protection and slip repair projects. And the last project that you guys may have seen, which is just south of the Mike McGowan Bridge, where that new section of South River Road is, that's the most recent project completed by the Corps, and that was their SAC Bank setback levy project. Our Southport project will essentially pick up where that SAC Bank project left off and will complete the improvements to the Sacramento River levy in Southport. From there, about six miles down to the southern terminus of the city limit. And that is scheduled to go to construction this year, and we're scheduled to be complete So before I get into some of the specifics about the Southport project, I wanted to go over some of the deficiencies that we typically see in levy systems, that the Southport project is designing the remediation measures for them. So typical deficiencies include erosion, slope stability, through seepage and under seepage, and then there's also vegetation and other encroachments that we have to deal So here's a graphic of some slope stability and erosion deficiencies. On the land side of the levy, you can see an unstable slope. Typically, you like to see smooth, two-to-one or three-to-one side slopes. What we typically find out there for 100-year-old levies are slopes that are irregular and not geometrically or geotechnically stable. And then on the water side, we often find erosion deficiencies where a wave and other water action has eroded material away from the underside of the levy, causing it to become So some of the design features that we're implementing to fix those deficiencies include, for the case of slope stability, we do slope flattening. And that's where we take those uneven slopes and we'll do a three-to-one or a two-to-one slope, both on the water side and the land side, to provide that stability fixes. And typically, to deal with erosion, we'll add rock slope protection, riprap is another term, to provide the armoring to the levy to prevent some other erosion. There are other methods that are used, vegetation, but with Corps policy the way it is now, which is they require vegetation-free levies, so anytime we touch a levy and degrade it or otherwise touch it to fix it, we do not plant vegetation and will typically use rock slope protection to remediate for the erosion deficiencies. Now, these deficiencies through and under seepage, these are the ones that really became at the forefront following the Hurricane Katrina. These were the causes or the suspected causes of the failures in Louisiana. These are what's known as through and under seepage, where water from the, obviously from the water side of the levy, can migrate through or under the levy and can entral material and cause those levies to then become weak, unstable, and ultimately fail. So some of the design features to remediate against through and under seepage includes a seepage berm, and this is primarily for under seepage, where you basically put a big chunk of dirt on the land side of the levy, and that weight then counterbalances or pushes back against the pressure of the water coming from the other side. So it's really a counterbalance to that under seepage. Another way of remediating for both through seepage and under seepage is through what's called a slurry cutoff wall. And it's essentially a concrete-type slurry mix that is placed down the center of the levy and then some depth down below the levy, and that depends on a bunch of geotechnical soil conditions, but it can range anywhere from 40 to 150, 120, 150 feet below grade. And that can prevent or mitigate against both through and under seepage. And our project uses a combination of both the seepage berms and the slurry cutoff walls. All right, so that brings us to the Southport Early Implementation Project. The graphic on the right that you see is an illustration of the project. Again, it picks up where the Corps' SAC Bank setback levy project completed at the north end of the project, and then this project will replace about six miles of existing levy with about 5.6 miles of a combination of both fix-in-place and setback levy. And a setback levy just essentially is a brand-new levy that's constructed some distance setback from the existing levy. And so that 3.8 miles of setback levy, brand-new levy constructed from the ground up, that will become the new flood protection feature and flood protection levy for this reach along the Sacramento River. The setback levy also will create two, what we call, offset areas. So I'm trying to get my mouse here to work. If you follow along where the setback levy begins in the north area, where it's setback from the current levy, so it departs here at the bottom of what's called Segment G, and then is setback, and then comes up against the Bee's Lake area right in here, where it becomes an adjacent levy. So that defines this, what we call, an offset area in the north area. And then again, south of Bee's Lake, it departs again from adjacent to the levy. It's setback away from the existing levy and then ties back in down here, right at the top of Segment A. So that creates this southern offset area. And I'll explain a little bit later what the significance of the offset areas are. The project, because of its size and complexity, is broken into essentially two phases. The first phase, which is nearing completion, was the construction of this Village Parkway alignment here. That's the replacement for South River Road, which will be removed almost in its entirety from its current location on the existing levy. And so this Village Parkway South is the replacement roadway for South River Road. There's my mouse. So it's about three miles long, extends from the intersection of Lake Washington and the current Village Parkway in the north, three miles south, and connects with Gregory Avenue. These roadways that are tangential or come off of Village Parkway are private roadways being constructed to provide access to property owners who would normally have received their access from the property from the existing South River Road. And the only segment of South River Road that will remain is between the two marinas. So once the setback levies are constructed, two access roads, one about in this location and one in this location on either side of Segment E. Access roads will be constructed from Village Parkway across the top of the new levy and will land on the existing levy at South River Road. So we'll have two accesses, one north and one south of Bee's Lake, to provide circulation and access to the two marinas that are right along South River Road now. So Phase Two of the project, which is, that's the levy improvements. I'm not scheduled to begin later this year, and it mitigates for the various deficiencies that I was describing earlier through this combination of design features. So I'm just going to walk you briefly through the design features by segment, and these are primarily determined by the geotechnical soil conditions, existing slopes on the levy, as well as proximity to homes and other reasons. But Segment A down here in the south is essentially a strengthen-in-place or fix-in-place solution. It will include a slurry cutoff wall and rock slope protection or augmented rock slope protection on the water side. In Segment B1, which is this transition piece right here, we would transition from fix-in-place to the setback levy. We have a slurry cutoff wall, rock slope protection only in this green section here. And then when it transitions to the setback levy in sort of Segment B2, there's also a slurry cutoff wall, but no rock slope protection. In Segment C, we've got the setback levy. That includes the slurry cutoff wall and this landside seepage berm. That's sort of this green area here. And that's where we're using both a combination of a shallow cutoff wall and the landside seepage berm to remediate against that through and under seepage that I talked about earlier. Then in Segment D, we've got the setback levy and slurry cutoff wall. Segment E is setback, slurry cutoff wall, and landside seepage berm. And then, and that goes through F as well. And then in Segment G, it's again strengthen-in-place, slurry cutoff wall, and some rock slope protection on the water side. The one commonality through the entire project is that there's a slurry cutoff wall as a mitigation measure in every single segment. So the last part of the construction, once all the new levy features, certainly the setback levy, which becomes the new flood control feature, once that's in place, we're going to degrade segments of what now is called the remnant levy in three locations. The first is in the north area and adjacent to the north offset area here, and it's the little red, the red portion here. And then there's two degrades. We call these inlet outlets. There's two in the south offset area. And what these will do is will connect the river to these offset areas to create additional floodplain and additional habitat. This is a very unique feature, and this project provides a very unique opportunity to be able to create this connectivity and to create this restoration of floodplain in an urban setting like West Sacramento. The amount of inundation in the offset area depends directly upon the river level, but we anticipate that we would see water in the offset area at least once every two years, and it will rise and fall along with the river levels. As you may have noticed, this year, we had some pretty good rain, and the river levels did rise a lot higher than they have in recent years. And the offset area would have been inundated for periods of time, maybe twice during this, if it had been constructed, maybe two times during this winter, maybe for up to a week or two at a time until the river level recedes. So there are features that are being designed in the offset area for drainage that will allow, after inundation and the river level lowers, then the water can drain positively out of the offset area, avoiding fish stranding and things like that. Now, the project is almost entirely self-mitigating on-site, and in addition to that, there is enough habitat created that the project can provide advanced mitigation for the future federal project, once that's implemented and authorized later this year. So that's also one of the very nice features and nice benefits of this particular project. Right now, there is a continuous, well, obviously through South River Road, you can traverse the entire top of the levy from the Mike McGowan Bridge all the way to the southern end of the city. When the project is complete, as I mentioned, you know, in the north area, there's the degradation of the levy for the north and southern inlet outlets. That levy segment is no longer traversable continuously. However, with the fix-in-place solutions transitioning to the setback levy, there is a one continuous levy path or maintenance road on top of the levy that can get you from, or certainly from the maintenance vehicles, from top of the project all the way to the bottom of the project. And as Wendy will discuss on the next item, this provides some unique opportunities for future recreation and other amenities. So this project is truly a multi-objective project. First and foremost, it's a flood protection project, and it's designed to provide at least 200-year level of flood protection for this segment of levy and for the city. It enhances, as I mentioned, creates additional floodplain, enhances habitat. And in this particular graphic here, this is sort of a cross-section of the offset area and what it will look like post-project. If I can get my mouse to work again. Well, on the right-hand side of the screen, since my mouse is not cooperating, on the right-hand side of the screen is the existing or post-project, that's the remnant levy. And you can see that it's been somewhat degraded from the original contour, which is that red line there. And that, because it's no longer the flood control feature, and it will no longer be considered a project levy, we can plant along that levy. We can provide mitigation for our project's impacted trees, and we can also provide additional plantings for additional trees and additional habitat. Then the offset area is that area that, between the two levies, the remnant and the new setback levy, which is the levy that is on the left-hand side of the screen. And so that just sort of depicts the various plantings that can go in and be planted in the offset area to provide that, again, mitigation for the project and that additional habitat. On the water side of the setback levy, there is a bench and maintenance corridor. We've got three-to-one side slopes. We've got a 20-foot crown at the top, also a maintenance corridor, and then three-to-one side slopes on the land side, followed by seepage berm, and then another, at the very edge of the picture, another 20-foot O&amp;M corridor. So all these O&amp;M corridors provide opportunities for future walking, hiking, biking, and things of that nature, in addition to patrols, potential floodfighting, and things that are necessary, excuse me, for flood protection. So the project's schedule, as I mentioned, Phase One, the Village Parkway South, the paving was completed. The signing and striping is actually advancing ahead of schedule. We anticipate that being completed by the end of this month, maybe the first week of June. Project completion and groundbreaking ceremony right now is scheduled for June 17th, so we have a hard deadline now to get everything completed, and so we can open that road up to the use for the public. Excuse me, Phase Two, levy construction. As I said, we'll plan to award contract this year and begin construction. Year one includes borrow and setback, borrow activities, excavating dirt to create and construct the setback levy. Year two, complete setback levy construction, transition to the fix-in-place areas, either in Segment A or G, as well as some of the contouring and grading in the offset areas. And then year three, we would wrap up whatever remains for the fix-in-place solutions, complete the offset area grading, and then do those last degradations of the then-remnant levy to create those inlet outlets. And I put up on your years, four through nine, is, excuse me, mitigation. We'll be doing the plantings in the offset area at the completion of the construction of the levy portion of the project, and then we have somewhere between a five- and 10-year establishment period to make sure that what we've planted and what we've created takes root and does what it's intended to do. And that concludes the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if you'd like to go back to any of the slides, I'd be happy to do that, too.
Okay. Are there any questions by the, yes, Commissioner Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Faben. I have a couple of questions regarding the old levy. Why only degrade it in three locations instead of removing a majority of it?
So the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers takes a pretty conservative approach when it comes to removing flood control features, especially in light of the fact that the new levy will have very little vegetation and, which provides some buffering for erosion and provides stability. And so to degrade the entire, for example, to degrade the entire levy and subject the new levy without that mature vegetation and roughness and those things that slow down flow to the flows of the Sacramento River could cause excessive erosion during that period of time when we're trying to get the vegetation established. And by leaving a lot of the existing levy in place, we've provided almost a two-levy buffer to the Southport community. So the existing levy will take up most of the wind-wave type erosion and only the sort of tidal, not really tidal, but only the, so the rising and falling of the river and and the water flowing very gently into the offset areas keeps that flow and that potential erosion impacts at a minimum.
So, interestingly, you mentioned that the vegetation aids against erosion and provides stability, but you also mentioned the Army Corps of Engineers is pretty much dead-set against allowing trees on the levee. And I actually thought their position had changed recently in light of a lawsuit from Fish and Wildlife Service to allow vegetation, if healthy, and not a hazard on levees.
So, the jury's still out on the final decision on the vegetation issue, and I mean that figuratively, not literally. And there's still work that has to be done with the Army Corps to work with the various interests, including the state of California, on what is going to be the new standard of care for vegetation. As it stands right now, they are allowing, for all new construction, like our setback levee, there is no vegetation being constructed on the levee features themselves. So when I talk about the vegetation providing roughness to prevent against erosion, that's in the offset area, which is not part of the true flood control feature. But it does help to keep the flow through the offset area, both in and out and through the offset area, keep those flows stable, that minimizes its wave action and other action against the levee. And in that way, it helps to minimize erosion. So, and they are allowing us to sort of kick the can down the road on how we're going to deal with all the vegetation issues in the future. So, we have to, our proposal with Southport and the way that we're having Southport approved is, for those areas of levee, primarily in segments A and G, where we're going to degrade the levee, we're going to remove all the vegetation as we degrade it, and when we build those levee segments back up, no vegetation on those areas. But the areas of the segment, areas of the levee below what we're touching, we're leaving the vegetation in place. And that's the compromise that we have reached with the Corps. If we touch it, no vegetation. If we don't touch it, we can leave it in place, and we can deal with it later when they've finalized their, the vegetation guidelines and rules.
Okay. You actually went right into my next point, was if you are planning it this way, to leave an opening to allow for vegetation in the future. As you say, there seems to be some disagreement on whether or not vegetation is helpful versus harmful. And as far as adding recreation components to our levee system, I would definitely consider vegetation as being beneficial, especially as our number of days over, say, 100 degrees is increasing in this area. Being on top of a levee is just going to be miserable in the summertime.
Thank you.
Any other comments, any other questions or comments to my left? No, to my right? Commissioner?
Hi, Greg. You know, I have to tell you, I think this is really a great presentation because it kind of gets everybody back up to date. But, you know, and then I talked to you for just a second about the slurry wall, and I thought I read in the Tomas that that didn't work well everywhere. Was I right?
Well, I'm not familiar with whether or not the solutions that were intended to or construct in the Tomas, whether or not they worked well. What I, what I understand from the Tomas on the work that they've done, that I think this slurry wall work did what it was intended to do, but there's still some levee height issues that they need to do to raise it up to get to the 200-year level of flood protection. I think the, I believe the fixes they did solve for the 100-year level protection, but they need to do additional work to get it to 200-year level.
We're not touching the top of our levee, though, right? We're not raising our levee.
No, well, per the urban levee design criteria, which is the state criteria for how we construct levees, whatever the existing height is of our current levee, when we build this new setback levee, or we degrade and bring back up, we have to bring it back up to whatever height that currently exists. So even though, by design standard, to be 200-year level of flood protection plus three-foot of freeboard, if our levees are here, we don't design it to the 200 plus 3. We design it and put it back the way it was. So, and that's why, when you hear me or others say, "We're going to have at least 200-year level of flood protection," that's one of the main reasons why, is we're going to have additional freeboard above the 200-year level requirement.
What's freeboard?
Freeboard is the amount of area above the design water surface elevation that the levee then extends above that. So, based on known hydrology and hydraulics modeling, a 200-year level storm or 200-year level flood event would produce a certain water surface elevation along a levee segment. Freeboard is, you must build the levee some feet above that in order to ensure that there's no overtopping. So the design criteria is three feet above that design water surface elevation.
Is that what we're building behind where South River Road is then? Because we're not raising South River Road.
No.
So we're building the extra height behind South River Road?
So the setback levee, which is set back from South River Road, that will be built to the same height as the existing levee where South River Road is, and that exceeds the 200-year plus three-foot of freeboard.
My only other question is, who's in charge of building it? The Corps? Is that what you said?
No, we are. Wasafka.
Okay, so Wasafka will, or you will be in charge of all the improvements and bringing in the dirt and all that?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
So it's the largest construction project that I'm aware of that the city has ever undertaken.
I'm sure that's true. Anyway, thanks again.
Mr. Strumpfels.
Thank you for the excellent presentation. I just had one quick question about our southern border. If you could describe a little bit more about, you know, recognizing that your jurisdiction is the jurisdiction of the city, but once water starts moving, it flows in all directions, what happens there on the county line? And if there's any conversations with the county regarding the levee improvements south of the city boundary?
All right, so I'm going to go back to a graphic, probably... This one. So our southern border, there's a levee at the southern border. It's called the South Cross Levee. It's not a federal levee, it's not a state project levee, it's a private levee, if you will. So that was constructed by RD900, I'm not even too sure when, early 1900s. We just recently petitioned the Corps to bring that levee and to be recognized as a non-federal levee, but bring it into what's called the Rehabilitation and Repair Program. And so we've established that that levee currently provides hydraulic separation from the basin to the south, and that although improvements are needed to bring it up to a 200-year level standard, it will be included as part of that rehabilitation program, which essentially means that if there's ever a failure of the levee, the Army Corps will come in and help rebuild it. It's not accepted into that program, and it fails, although the Corps will help flood fight. When the flood fight's over, they go, "You're on your own." So, that particular levee is, and that process that we just went through is very important that establishes that separability from the lower basin and also limits, helps to limit the number of miles of levee that can affect us and can affect our system. Prior to that, from an inspection and repair perspective, there were 15, 20 miles of levee along the Sacramento River that were considered part of our levee system that we aren't, RD900, RD537, the state are not in charge of maintaining, and so deficiencies miles down the river can cause our entire levee system to fail the inspection and to get booted out of that rehabilitation program. So establishing that as a non-federal levee in the rehabilitation program was significant. So although it's a dry levee, and we don't expect to ever have any water against it, in the event that there was a failure downstream, either from the Ship Channel or from the Sacramento River, we've established through, through engineering principles, that it would provide, that hydraulic separability would not allow the waters to flow into the city. So that's where we get that southern protection, that our southern limit.
So it doesn't need significant repair or replacement?
It needs some repair and replacement, but because it's a dry levee, it's not the highest priority levee in the system. The rest of them that have water on them are, for obvious reasons, a higher priority. So that may be the last levee that gets repaired. But it is included both, the nice thing was, even before we established that acceptance into that program by the Corps, that levee was included by the Corps in that general evaluation report, and is included as part of the federal project. So they were, they saw the writing on the wall and were wise enough to include it.
Thank you.
And I just have a few questions. And some of them are just from your presentation. I got, I have some curiosity about some of the things that you mentioned. The Hurricane Katrina seepage that they found, was it over a period of time, or was it immediate with the water pressure?
You know, I don't know how long it took for that segment to fail. In the area that it failed, there's actually, was actually a flood wall. But the underseepage undermined the base of that flood wall, and then the pressure against the top of the flood wall caused it to collapse.
I see.
And, but it was that undermining of the base through underseepage that caused that failure. Depending on the nature of the deficiency in the base of the levee, it can happen fairly quickly, or it can happen over a prolonged period of time, just having high water on the other side. I think, and you may have heard the term boil, where, we have pictures in City Hall, if you take a walk sometimes, you'll see, maybe even out here, there's pictures of sandbags people creating, almost looks like a well. And when there's high water, sometimes you'll get boils on the land side of the levee, and it's just water just sort of piping out. When the water's clear, it's not that, it's always a concern, but it's not a heightened concern. When the water is muddy, that means it's entrailing material along with it, and it's undermining and causing damage to the internal, either underneath or through the levee. So, one of the quick ways to combat that is you basically, and Wendy's in one of the pictures, you put sandbags all around where the boil is, and you build it up until that water stops flowing. You create that hydraulic back pressure to stop it from flowing. And that's where the seepage berm and provides that pressure. The cutoff wall prevents the migration of the water.
Okay. That's interesting.
It is very interesting.
And your presentation was very good, by the way. It was very helpful to get all that background. And who monitors the vegetation that's like considered non-compliant along the levee?
Well, the Corps is the, the Corps is really the ones who are concerned about it. The state, who also does inspections, isn't too concerned about it. The locals aren't very concerned about it. We recognize the benefit, both to, for recreation purposes, as well as for habitat. But the Corps, through their, I think it's biannual inspections, they note vegetation and they mark it down as an encroachment that needs to be removed. Because of the court case, those are not considered, although they mark it as a deficiency, they don't act on it as a deficiency. So it's noted, and they move on. So it's not, as it stands right now, vegetation encroachments, vegetation on levees is not a reason for a deficiency that would remove a levee segment or a levee system from that rehabilitation program I was talking about.
Okay. And the responsibility to remove it?
Would fall to the local maintaining agencies, but right now, like I said, there's no mandate to remove it.
Okay, no mandate, okay.
Yeah. It's just noted as a deficiency, and they move on.
Okay. And like Commissioner Moore, I was curious to know on the slurry cutoff wall, you know, just to make sure that it's tested and proven, and, you know, just the history about that. Can you provide a little more background on that?
Well, what I will tell you is that there are a number of checks and balances that are put in place, from the slurry mix, samples taken and tested as, daily, as the material is being put in place. And then there's a thorough review by, like in the case of the Army Corps project, that setback levee right there at the south end of the Mike McGowan Bridge, one of the reasons that project took so long to close out was, in review of all the documentation by the Corps that was provided by the contractor, they felt there were some sand lenses that weren't completely mixed within that slurry wall construction. And so they required the contractor to go back in, remove portions of it, and reinstall it, until they were assured by all the test results that it had a homogenous mix and that it would perform as designed. And so the same type of rigor will be going through in our project. There's performance criteria that we have to meet, and it's not at the end of the project, it's while it's being installed. So there's a number of samples that are, it's very sample-intensive. There's compaction tests, there's soil type tests for the material that's being used to construct the levee, to make sure the right material type is being placed in the right zones of the levee. And that type of rigor is also performed on the slurry mix itself. And even before they can go to construction, they have to take soil samples and slurry, and they have to act, the contractor will actually have to provide a slurry design mix that has to be reviewed and approved before they can even start construction. It's a fairly, it's very rigorous.
Okay, good, that's good to know. And can you, I'm trying to understand advanced mitigation, can you provide any more detail on opportunity for advanced mitigation, mitigation for future federal projects? Just a little more background on that for my own.
So our project is going to have certain environmental impacts. We're going to remove X number of trees. And normally, when you're dealing with U.S. Fish and Wildlife or other agencies that have requirements to mitigate for those impacts, they'll say, "Okay, you've impacted 10 trees, you need to install 10 trees," or "You've impacted 10, we need to install 20." In the case of our project, we're going to fully plant both the north and the south offset areas. By our estimates, the plantings that we would do, by way of example, in the north area would fully mitigate for the project. But we're not going to leave the south area barren. So we're going to fully plant it. Well, we want to get, we want to get an accounting for that. Fish and Wildlife says, "You need to plant 50 trees." We just planted 300 trees. So those additional 250 trees, as long as they survive and thrive, we want them to be counted towards a project that we, that might be implemented in the north area as part of the federal project. We cost-share in all of the federal projects, and if there are tree impacts in the north, we want to be able to point back to the Southport area and say, "Yeah, but we planted a bunch of extra trees in the Southport area that now are, that you can credit against the impacts to the north area." And that's not to say that we wouldn't do mitigation in the north area, but it's a significant, significant cost savings to the overall program to be able to install this and create this advanced mitigation now, to be able to apply it towards these future projects.
Good, good strategy, I like that. Yeah. And let's see. I think that's pretty much it. You know, just looking at the deficiencies, I was just curious to know, how did you determine those deficiencies?
Lots and lots and lots and lots of borings. So we go by past levee performance. Have there been boils? Have there been slips?
I see.
And there, you know, and there have been indications along this particular region, on the Southport levee, of boils and slips indicating through and underseepage. But the state, our contractors, have done a tremendous number of geotechnical borings to determine soil types, conditions, compaction, and whether or not they meet the current design standards. If they don't meet the current design standards, then you have to make those improvements. And a lot of it has to do with permeability, and most soil types without a slurry wall don't pass the permeability for, through an underseepage. And there's a number of computations that are performed, assuming 200-year level water, 200-year water surface elevation, and the pressure that it would put on the existing soil conditions, and then they calculate all these exit gradients for, that depict seepage. And throughout the project reach, and in most of the project reaches, those exit gradients fail. So these design standards have to be put in place in order to make those exit gradients pass. And so that's sort of how we get to these design solutions.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Thank you very much for all that background. It's a lot of work. And you've been doing, putting a lot of time into this and thoroughly understanding what we need to do and what we need to accomplish. And it, it's quite valuable information for us to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you again for the backing up 10 yards and giving us some background. As one of the newer commissioners, it really helped me to understand the project. Thank you. You talked a lot about creating habitat. I'm wondering, is this habitat expected to serve any federally or state endangered species specifically? Are the nature of the habitat being designed in such a way for that purpose or is it just being done sort of generally?
Now, there is a specific purpose in, in targeting specific species or at least listed species. So for example, salmon, for example, salmon and salmonids and smelt, but I don't think we see a whole lot of smelt up this far, but primarily salmon in terms of the floodplain habitat. So there is a, an evaluation of the type of habitat that's done by U.S. Fish and Wildlife and whether it's, you know, considered average. And I'm using the wrong terms because this is not my area of expertise, but they do evaluate what's constructed and whether it serves as high-value habitat or low-value habitat. So that, that evaluation will be part of the project as well. So, and our intent is to, to create very high-value habitat.
Do you think that there is some chance this will become habitat for Swainson's Hawk?
So we are planting a tremendous number of trees that when they mature will be nesting habitat for, you know, available for Swainson's Hawk. So yes.
I understand that's beyond your control, but.
I haven't.
Is it on?
No.
Okay. I understand it's beyond your control, but I was just, I was just curious, are we expecting that with the removal of whatever vegetation has to be removed to proceed with the, with the project, are we concerned about losing any habitats for, for any current species?
Yeah, that's part of the process that we go through in the environmental, in the environmental review, both the state and, and federal, the, through the environmental impact report, environmental impact statement. So yes, we are impacting some habitat, existing habitat, which is one of the reasons why we're, we're planting or replacing that habitat in some cases tenfold. So the nature of the project is what it is. The footprint of the project, you know, the levee exists where it exists, so much of it can't be avoided. And so how we mitigate for that is by replacing it, typically in much larger quantities than we're removing, but in recognition that it takes time for that, those plantings to mature and become, you know, appropriate habitat. So.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Yeah, before we let you go, I just want to make sure I open it up for public comment or questions, and I don't have any. Then we'll close the public comment and period, oh, oh, sorry. And well, thank you very much for your presentation, an excellent presentation. And look forward to having you come back whenever you feel it's helpful for all of us again. All righty then.
Yeah, so the, the goal of Greg's presentation was to really tee up what Wendy has to cover in our next item. I think we, we started to touch on this a little bit at our last meeting. And so now Wendy is here to hopefully, you know, bookend everything that Greg provided in the, assume the levees have already been done and completed. Fast forward a couple of years, what our opportunities may be.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Wendy Williams. I'm a senior civil engineer in the community development department. And as a follow-up to the project status update that Greg just gave you, I want to delve a little further into the potential recreational opportunities that will be created by the improvements that Greg's group is putting in. So this picture is a lot like one of the, several of the ones that you saw in Greg's presentation. It starts to give you an overview of the offset areas that will be created by the project. So the bold, the bold red line along here is the setback levee and seepage berm. Those bright green lines on here and, and this side, those are the paved accesses from Village Parkway all the way up to South River Road on the north and south of Bees Lakes. And then that's the connection, the existing South River Road between those two accesses. That's the section of South River Road that will remain to provide access and maintenance road for the marinas and for levee maintenance. Let's see. So Bees Lakes is in between those two paved accesses and there's also a future planned sports park that's just north of that northern access. As noted here, the area created by the setback levee will create 125 acres of offset area, both north and south of Bees Lakes. About a third of that would be north of Bees Lakes and two-thirds of that would be south of Bees Lakes. The approximate average of the width of that offset area is 250 to 300 feet across, but in its widest part down here at the bend, that's approximately 800 feet across. So let's zoom in just a little more. So this is a more detailed look of the area north of Bees Lakes. The yellow line here at the left side of the screen, that's the northern paved access from South River Road down to Village Parkway. And this triangular piece here is the future community sports park. The, this middle blue line represents where Linden Road is, to give you an idea. The dashed purple line along here, that's one of those inlet outlets that, that Greg was talking about, which allows water to come in and out of the floodplain area when the river rises and falls. And I know they're hard to see, but if I can get the mouse to work again, the, these thin purple lines, that's the continuous gradient that's carefully graded such that water will come in here as the river rises and comes straight back out as the river falls, such that fish won't be stranded. There won't be any ponding in there. It'll be a constant gradient. So this is the detailed look of the offset area south of Bees Lakes. You'll notice that it is significantly larger than the northern area. Again, the yellow line here at the, at the right side of the screen this time is the paved access from South River Road down to Village Parkway. The two dashed purple lines, those are the two inlet outlets. And the thin purple lines in here, that, that constant gradient that allows the water to come in and all the way up, almost to Bees Lakes and all the way back out. So that the area across, the 250 to 300 feet I'm talking about are in these skinnier sections here. And then the 800 feet, this is approximately 800 feet across at its widest. So this is a simplified representation of a floodplain ecological cycle in the summer or dry season. During this time, most of the offset area would be available for beneficial recreational uses to the extent that those uses do not interfere with the ecological cycle. So for instance, uses which may induce erosion at the inlets and outlets would, or which might disturb sensitive habitat species would not be allowed. And this artist's rendering shows the floodplain ecological cycle during times of flooding. The main point here is that any improvements within the area of potential flooding must be able to withstand that flooding. So we think about Discovery Park and its improvements that are occasionally flooded. This is a cross-section of the actual project at one of the inlet outlets. So that in this area, the entirety of, of the existing levee will be degraded and removed to allow the water in and out during times of flooding. This is also a, an actual project cross-section. I'll let you digest this slide as, as we talk about a few items. This slide starts to give you an idea of the, the magnitude of the width of the area. The width here shown is approximately 250 feet from the water side of the new setback levee to the land side of the existing levee. And that 250 feet does not include the existing levee, nor does it include the new levee or the setback berm. So it, it'll feel a lot wider than the 250 or 300 feet. So the new setback levee will be approximately 28 to 29 feet high from the bottom of the floodplain and about 22 feet above Village Parkway. So before we talk about potential recreational uses, let's talk about some constraints for just a second. The design objectives and mitigation requirements for the project will drive the placement of trees and other landscaping in various areas to achieve those objectives and requirements. The final list of uses that are allowed in the offset area, in the floodplain area, must not interfere with those mitigations. So for instance, we go back to if any use might increase or induce erosion at one of the inlet outlets, that use is not going to be allowed. Secondly, all uses that we come up with should be consistent with our upcoming regional trails initiative, our parks master plan, our bike and ped master plan. And we need to keep those restrictions in the back of our mind, but I don't want that to cloud our creativity about what possible, you know, what recreational possibilities could happen in this, it's an expansive area. So let's look at some recent examples of how flood protection projects and recreation uses can coexist. So this is, these are pictures of the Bright Park Natural Nature Trail. This, these trail features overlay the Rivers Levy Project that was completed in 2011. So these are pictures that are north of Bright Park and Riverbank Road. Similarly, these pictures show work at Riverwalk Park just after the I Street Bridge project in 2008. Excuse me. The area shown is just south of the I Street Bridge, right behind Cal Sturs. At, at project completion, the only paved roadways will be those two paved access roadways between Village Parkway and South River Road and that section of South River Road between those two. All of the other roadways that we might share for levee access, maintenance roads and recreation uses will be compacted gravel much like this shown here. So as, as noted in the staff report, walking and jogging uses will be the very easiest to accommodate. And even, even on a larger scale, for organized events, parking and access will be key components. So the planned community sports park will really come in handy and could be used as a start and finish and/or staging area. The current park concept includes about 160 parking spaces and a large pavilion area, restrooms, snack bar, three little league fields, although the final configuration of that park could, could change. So Wasafka will also have several other remnant parcels at the close of this project that might also be used for parking. And they, they're scattered along the project area. There's a few along the east side of Village Parkway, one at the end of Linden Road, et Trail bikes also would be well accommodated with the gravel levee roads. But if we wanted to accommodate road bikes or other transportation modes, we could consider at least paving at least some of the maintenance roads. That also would require environmental review and approval by the Flood Protection Board and the Army Corps. These are just some examples of bird watching or wildlife viewing structures, although viewing areas need not be this elaborate. It could be just a widened-out area of, of the pathway with a few benches. Oop. Other way. Going the wrong way. There we go. This is another option that staff has thrown around. Disc or frisbee golf. Archery area is, is a possibility, especially considering how large the offset area is. Gently sloping areas along the riverbank may lend themselves to areas where people may launch canoes or kayaks into the river. This, this is by far my favorite option. This one's really cool to get local school students to use the area for all kinds of ecology, biology, nature lessons. Again, the future sports park could accommodate school bus parking and a staging area and So one issue that parks and our police department constantly battle is the misuse of our recreational areas. And when I say misuse, that could be in the form of littering, vandalism, even the use of motorized vehicles on areas not intended for that type of, of vehicle. People often think that enforcement is the only way to combat criminal activity and illegal behavior. But actually, one of our first lines of defense to combat this should be SEPTED-friendly design of the area. So I know that sounds strange, but crime prevention through environmental design or SEPTED is the concept that undesirable behaviors can be encouraged or discouraged through the form and design of the built environment and its physical condition. It's paying attention to sightlines and lighting and not creating hiding places by the placement of walls or fences or landscaping. It's notifying users where they can and can't go and, and what they should and shouldn't do and the consequences for noncompliance. It's making sure that everything's well maintained, that trash is regularly picked up, graffiti is removed as soon as possible and broken and malfunctioning. is removed as soon as possible, and broken and malfunctioning items are repaired or replaced immediately. So SEPTED works for several reasons. First and foremost, because would-be criminals and illegitimate users just don't want to be seen. So keeping things open and and the sightlines clear definitely discourages that activity. Orderly and well-marked areas make those legitimate users feel more comfortable, and then they start coming around more, and it's, the cycle helps. And those spaces, when they're when they're well-maintained and feel like they're owned, people are very happy with that, and the illegitimate use is discouraged. So we'll look at just a few of the key principles of SEPTED that we can apply. Natural surveillance is arguably the most important SEPTED concept. Think of it as passive security features that maximize visibility and minimize potential hiding places. Territoriality and access management work together to define the spaces with the use of informational and directional signage that convey the rules and consequences through placement of signs, fences, gates, landscaping. And these are just just a few of the many wayfinding and place-making signs that you've probably seen at other trail locations and other parks. So that's the end of my presentation at this point. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then staff would love to hear your comments and suggestions for any additional recreational opportunities that we should look to include in the offset area.
Thank you, Wendy. I appreciate the presentation. I'll start to my right. Commissioner Moore, do you have any questions, comments, feedback?
Hi, Wendy. Well, it's a great presentation. It's nice to see we're trying to do that. Is South River Road as we know it today, it's going to be removed, the pavement will be removed, but is it going to be a way to go all the way down South River Road in this?
As as Greg mentioned in his presentation, no.
I didn't listen to him real close. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, with the, especially with the installation of those inlet-and-outlet areas.
Right.
Those will definitely cut all the way through South River Road. You won't be able to drive the entire length of South River Road anymore.
So are we talking about, I I guess my one comment is, we talked about walking, jogging, bicycling and stuff, but in all the plans that we've ever had in the past, there's also been equestrian trails up there. And that is not shown anywhere in here, and that's one of the major part of our whole plan out in Southport. And it's supposed to go all the way from Southport and possibly even going over the I Street Bridge to connect into Sacramento. And I just didn't see that in here, so it's just my. Mr. Tilly, don't tell Ron Morizini I said something nice about the horses, but, you know, I I've always questioned horses, but that's always our plan. Everywhere we have any plan for any trail, the equestrians are included, and particularly out in Southport where they are.
Yeah. And I'm sure Greg will jump in if I say something I shouldn't be saying. But it's my understanding that horses will not be allowed on a levee, and we are creating the setback levee. And at at this point, horses will not be allowed on the setback levee, and if they can't get on the setback levee, then there's no way they'll get onto the South River Road levee.
But I just, again, like I say, I'm just reminding you that that was, if there's a trail, it's supposed to accommodate equestrian if possible.
Yes.
So, you know, and maybe it's not legal, but we still have them out there.
Well, the other, the other thing I would say is that the Regional Trails Initiative will go a lot further and a lot more in-depth in looking at, you know, where they can be accommodated and where they would best be accommodated in West SAC as well as in the region itself.
And I should have asked Greg this question, and I didn't, but why are we continuing to allow South River Road between the two marinas? I thought it was just going to be a direct shot.
It it provides circulation access for the two marinas. If you if you didn't have that section of South River Road, you'd only have one way in and one way out for each marina, and this provides two ways for both marinas. So it's it's an emergency access.
Is it just emergency access and not?
No.
Normal access, not every day?
No.
That's a long ways between the two marinas.
It will be, it will be open, public access for the two marinas. So anybody can drive up to the two marinas, you know, and go the rest of that section of that.
It just seems like that's something that just creates more headaches when you have to go to the core and get approval. I understand making it for emergencies, but to do it and leave it open all day just seems like it's more of a headache than it's a good idea. Just a comment. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Strumpf?
Thank you for your presentation. Somewhat serendipitously, as I was listening to it, I got a little alert on my phone from the city talking about how Amgen Tour of California is going to be going down South River Road on the 22nd, which I got very excited about and then somewhat sad about because it'll be the last time that they'll be riding along the river for at least the next couple of years. Something that's been super important to me, and I know several of my other commissioners share this interest is, and I think fits in nicely with the 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 design standards of the criminal prevention, design standards, is getting more people to be able to use the trail. And I think the easiest way you do that is by allowing more transportation options on the trail, which means you need a paved, you need, I think you need paved trail, to be, to be very blunt, and would be very supportive of taking any action we need to to ensure that there is paved trail access. And recognizing that, and I know there's rules around the core about what can be paved or public use roads on top of the levees, but if it can be paved on top of the levee, I'd rather see a fully paved access road there, even if it's not open to the public for driving, so that we could have a fully paved road for biking, so that we could continue to attract events like this, to be able to use the waterfront and enjoy the waterfront, and increase the amount of foot traffic, because I know tons of people who, as bad as that River Road is right now in some places to ride on, still ride on it because they enjoy that riding experience.
Yeah.
I could personally would would take it every day to work as opposed to, you know, riding down Jefferson or or through through other means. So I I just, I want to strongly support looking at and and being really creative. I know it's a funding issue too, but, you know, putting a lot of juice behind trying to find a way to get a fully paved trail. And maybe it's something built over time, like the Clarksburg Trail is being done, but whatever we can do to do that. The other thing I want to bring up is that one of the activities that's not listed in here or talked about but happens frequently along South River Road now is fishing. And lots of parking off of South River Road and walking down the banks, and, I mean, Thursday is where I see 60 cars between the McGowan Bridge and Linden Road parked for fishing. And so I'm wondering, has there been any thought or discussion about how fishing access will be handled, where it will be provided? Are we going to set up places where it's going to be acceptable and not acceptable, given some of the habitat work we're creating?
Well, as I, you know, mentioned a couple of times, yes. In areas that have the sensitive habitat or whenever the use would conflict with the project's mitigations, it would not be allowed. So yes, we will probably have to define specific areas that it's okay to do whatever use it is. And I think fishing, it just, it just didn't come up yet.
Sure.
We know, we know that it happens, and it didn't get into my presentation.
No, it's fair. It wasn't a criticism at all. It was just, it was something that I think we need to think about because it's a current outdoor activity that's happening frequently along the riverfront, and given the challenges with trying to keep people off those banks once we restore them, because there's not going to be the vegetation there if we pull them off, you know, where where are safe places for fishing going to be and where unsafe places going to be? And do we need to make some decisions and about where those are and where those aren't for not just a safety, you know, perspective, but also to not make sure that all this work and energy and money that goes into this project gets segregated by use in places that aren't, you know, the best place for people to be walking down banks and throwing in their rods?
Right.
So I think that was, and honestly, to the extent we can preserve dedicated places for folks who want to fish on the river on this side, I know there's lots of folks who use the deep water channel too, but, you know, if we're, whether it's dropping in a canoe and being able to fish from your canoe or a kayak, or just being able to to riverbank fish, I think to the extent we can have those options designated, that would be really helpful. And then I'm supportive of all the other ideas as well. I think you did an excellent job coming up with this and presenting it. I just, those those two things in particular are super important to me, and I know a couple of other members as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leibig?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Wendy, for your presentation. I I also have a follow-up question for Greg, but maybe we can pull this together later after after Wendy's done with hers. First, again, thank you, and I actually would second most of Andrew's comments. Just most. In addition to the bicycle tours, we've been hosting a lot of 5K, 10K marathon runs, and often our runs are on surface streets, and we manage it pretty well. Sacramento has had some hiccups lately as they're, you know, trying to navigate downtown areas and J Street off-ramps. But we're also densifying, and I could easily see us having more difficulties as as we become more dense. This type of a trail would be a huge benefit for 10Ks, marathons. I'm not sure if they'll make 5K, just getting down there, but if it's tied into, say, the loop trail around the city as well, that would be an amazing long-term asset. I know that's also part of the trail system, you know, plans for the for the city, but again, that would need to be paved, probably not just, not just gravel, although I enjoy running on gravel for any sort of organized event like that. It would probably need to be paved. Also, bike, multi-purpose path is a huge asset. When I see this type of a project, I think of the American River Parkway Parkway and the path from the Sacramento River all the way up to Folsom and what you can do with that. And again, that requires at least one path being paved to be multi-multi-use. But if you have that, then you, all of a sudden, you introduce a transportation alternative, which many of us have been striving for as we're trying to come up with alternatives to to vehicle traffic. And this would get people from Southport all the way up into the Bridge District and Washington District, where we're trying to get, you know, restaurants and such right along the river would, so additional transportation, again, paved. So the one, one thing, the one part I disagreed with Andrew on, yeah. I I do like all of the ideas, and I think this is great brainstorming. I would want to ensure that we have mixed-use options. So options that where one activity doesn't prohibit the use or by other activities. And the one concern I had was was the archery, and I think you could fit it in, but archery takes a lot of space, requires mostly an open space, and for hopefully obvious reasons, you can't have anybody behind the archery range. So if you have it up against a levee, maybe in a small area, but it it does take a lot of area, specifically because you have to have an area behind the archery range where nobody can be.
Right.
So I had one concern with that, but it was more of a general, make sure our our uses are compatible with each other. And and of course, the trees. We're going to have a very barren levee for quite a while, and I I would encourage the city to continue looking at tree and shading options. It's it's not just, you know, for shaded riparian area for habitat purposes, but also just because it's pleasant. And it makes what's barren wall-looking structure, it makes it a little bit softer and more appealing. So that's it. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Kelcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wendy, this is exciting. I had a couple of ideas that are more transportation really than recreation, so I don't know whether it fits into this model or not and whether it would require too much development for a flood protection structure. But I'm thinking of a couple of things, one of them being a water taxi that might be housed at the marina and travel to Old Sacramento or at least a little further north in West Sacramento, perhaps to the barn or a place near the barn. I don't know, downstream, maybe even Clarksburg, just as a way of getting people on the river and enjoying it in a way that some of us who don't ride bicycles very much but would love to be on the river more. And similarly, perhaps something like a pedestrian bicycle ferry that, unlike the American River, we use both sides here. And the city of Sacramento has and will have a more developed and paved greenway, bikeway, pretty much consistently all along the eastern side of the river. So the ability, I think, to walk or jog or bicycle across without a bridge could be solved by a little ferry. And I know nothing about the commercial aspects of this and whether it's even feasible, but we're just brainstorming here, so I thought I'd bring it up.
That's right. We're brainstorming, and all ideas are good at this point.
Right.
Commissioner Thompson?
Sure, thank you. I'm, I have a really long list of suggestions, some of which have been covered, but I was absolutely thrilled to read the material for this week. All of, everything in the pocket was so exciting to me, particularly this, this project. I'm so excited to live in the city where we're really trying to utilize our space while complying with with regulations and requirements. It's, I'm so excited to take my kids to these spaces in the future. A lot of my suggestions have have already been 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 presented by my fellow commissioners. I did want to echo the, my fellow commissioners' concern and eagerness for a paved pathway. I I absolutely agree. I I certainly wouldn't be jogging on any sort of gravel, and I'm sure others feel the same, as, and of course, for biking, and a lot of, a lot of people like to bike and have the little trailer for their children, and I don't think you're going to feel very safe on gravel with those either. So I'm not sure if it's a possibility, but of course, I would, I echo their concerns and and I agree with them. I love the idea for frisbee golf. That did not make it on my, it's nothing, I've never thought of that. I did read it in the materials, and I didn't understand it until until your photo in your presentation. But I I think that it does, we we've been going over over the general plan in in various chapters, and and one of them, what was about the, was about health and, you know, getting people outside, and I just think that it encourages activity for all age, age groups, and I and I feel like it would be such, just such a fun activity to to participate in. So my other ideas were, I did have fishing, and then I had a slash for hunting, and I'm not sure if there's, you know, ducks, or I'm not really quite sure, because I'm not a hunter, but I know that people hunt in our area because I hear them during hunting season quite frequently. So I'm I'm not sure if there's, if, you know, there's ours that are, there's ducks or, they're hunting something out by, by where I am. I'm in Bridgeway Lake, so they're hunting something out there. Yes, I hear them very clearly. So do my kids. And and then I'm, I'm not sure if we're looking at possibilities for camping, or if it's not a large enough space for that, or maybe just some overnight, not long-term camping. Obviously, I saw in your slide, and I was going to try to interrupt before she started allowing comment, to put, I was going to ask you to put back, if you could put up the slide that had the, the map area.
The, the section or the map?
The map where, where, so you can show us the the spaces that we're discussing. So there's the north, and then there's also the south of Bee's Lake, right?
Yeah. This, this is the north offset, offset area between the bold red line and the other red line here. That's the north offset, offset area between the bold red line and the other red line the other red line here. That's the north offset area. And then the pink area is Bees Lakes. The two green lines, that's the paved access up to South River Road, across South River Road, back down to Village Parkway. And then this is the southern offset area, the, the larger area between the southern side of Bees Lakes, all the way down to where the setback levee comes back to, to South River Road.
Okay. And to clarify, we're looking at, but filling this entire offset area, is that correct? And then there's the, the sports park up on the top?
We have the little sports park. By, just as a, as a, as a gauge, this blue area represents a nine-acre sports park. So, we have 125 acres that has possibilities.
Sure. Okay. Well, then I'll keep going down my list. So, another idea I had was kayaks or a paddleboat launch. I'm, I'm actually not familiar with, with the marina area. I don't know if there's actual formal, like proper boat, boat launches out there for motorized boats. I'm not actually sure. I'm not familiar. I'm not familiar with really much of the waterways, even though I'm born and raised in Sacramento. It just wasn't something my parents were interested in. So, I, I didn't, I didn't really learn that. But I think it'd be great to have some, some access, access to the water for, for some sports activities. And then I was also thinking, I really also enjoyed your, your idea for the educational opportunities, but I was actually thinking about for, for maybe a little bit more of a historic perspective. And I'm not quite sure what the history is specifically with the tribes and the, you know, just, just the settlement of the region in general, but I think that would be kind of a cool thing, to have just historic markers, kind, work with the Historic Society on this, and just kind of have historic markers throughout. I know for myself as a child, and even, even now as an adult, whenever I see historic markers, I'm always fascinated, and it really just kind of takes me back. Really, it really allow, it just allows me to see how important a certain piece of land is, and how far we've come, and where we came from. So, I think that children would enjoy that as well, and I know I certainly would have as a child. And it would be another opportunity for schools to come out and, and visit, you know, social studies type of thing. Of course, the bikes. And then I also had equestrian trails on my list, because where I'm at, I'm pretty far out, right, so I'm on Bridgeway Lakes. We, we see horses quite frequently, and it's, and it, I don't have horses, and I've only ridden them a few times in my life, but it's always been, it's just something majestic for, just to look at. It just gives such a beautiful feel to the community. And then obviously picnic areas. And then the other thing I was thinking, and I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know if parks still do this, but horseshoes?
Horseshoes, yeah.
Yeah, we used to do this when I was, when I was, when I was a kid. We had them at Elk Grove Park, and those were always a lot of fun as well during, during little outdoor parties. So, I was also concerned about the safety with the archery. I'm not sure if it would be like, just for specific lessons, or you just show up and do your archery on your own. I was a little bit concerned about that. I had written a note for myself on that. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Very good. Very good ideas by all the commissioners, and I have just, just a couple of thoughts as well on some of what my fellow commissioners were saying about the, the bike path being paved, and the environmental review by the Flood Board. Just provide a little more background on how much work that would take.
I think Greg might have a better idea about that than I do.
Okay.
Well, first, I don't, paved maintenance roads, if you will, which could be double as a bike trail, they're not incompatible with, with levees and flood fighting, and just regular maintenance activities. But anytime you touch a levee now, it requires approval by both the Central Valley Flood Protection Board and the, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It's not expensive. It's, just can take time. So, a typical permit process can take six, eight months.
Oh.
So, just, if you want to, if you want to do it, you just got to get, just take that into consideration before you start your project.
That's great. All right. That's good. I, I agree, like pretty much everybody else. I, I think has, as, as we continue to evolve, and not, not just for the recreational use, but for the practical use, to expand on that. And it just provides, you know, just multiple uses for, you know, recreation and, and other events, event opportunities. I, I think that that helps, you know, you know, with our crime design, that, you know, crime prevention design, just to continue to use that. It maintains upkeep. You, you have people that, in our community, that would be interested in preserving that. So, it's a significant investment, I think, for that use, to have it paved. And sometimes, you know, just like me, a grandma who jogs with a stroller, it, those strollers that are jogging strollers are inflatable, for the purpose of being able to have a smoother ride. So, that would be very hard to do on, on a, you know, gravel road. And so, I just think that, and I see a lot of, you know, moms and grandmas, I don't know, doing that as well out there in the community. I think it would be beautiful just to stroll along that area. And looking at maximizing on projects that can secure grant funding, and as we project, you know, what we can do so that we can expand our opportunities with, with our resources. So, if there is something we can partner with, one of our educational institutions, or local educational institutions, that can provide educational use, and then it could be used for multiple purposes, I think that would be something to take into consideration. Working, and I don't know, you may have done this already with the two-by-two, conversing through that, through that venue, seeing, you know, where our high schools are, and our other educational, you know, schools, how our schools feel, you know, what, you know, maybe just asking through a survey with the teachers, finding out what their interest is, and, you know, what would motivate them to get the kids out of the classroom, what resources they would need. Because if we're going to get them out there, there's going to have to be some way to get them out there. And so, just kind of like planning in advance to getting, you know, the kids out there, with some transportation modes, and what we can do, we can do to incorporate that through our, our educational system, and planning all of that. In, in the sports park, I'm not sure exactly what, what you're all thinking about including in there, but some, some places that I've seen, and it's something that I've heard around here, is having outdoor exercise machines. And I'm not sure if that's the right place for that, but these outdoor, you know, exercise machines, I've found to be used frequently when it's accessible. And did you want to provide a little bit of background on that?
The plan for the sports park there, like I said, it's really bare bones conceptual right at the moment. It's large pavilion for potential picnicking, rental space, three Little League fields, snack bar, restrooms, and about 160 parking spaces. And that's about as far as we've gone with planning that particular little, little park.
I should note that that's, that park is part of the proposed Liberty-specific plan area. That's something that is a project that's, you know, will be coming forward to the Planning Commission in, in the future. And so, that's something that's part of that project. It's not something that the, the city is, you know, proposing to construct, you know, anytime soon. But it is, it is something there that's, its location certainly offer, may could offer some benefit related back to the levee and vice versa.
I was just going to say that the suggestion of some kind of organized or exercise equipment, I think something like that in the offset area, certainly, as long as it's, you know, weatherproof, or
Right.
There could be trails with exercise stations in and among the offset area, so I don't know that it needs to be just relegated to the park.
I see.
I like the idea in getting out in nature and doing some exercise.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I've seen it used frequently when you, when you put them out there, and, you know, just gets adults out there who don't go to the gym to have access to it. And I, and, you know, just providing some feedback on what my fellow commissioners have said, I agree with the equestrian use. I like that residents who have horses and love to go out in the outdoors and have access, you know, to our beautiful trails here that are, that we're developing, I think would be really nice. Just making sure that they're, just when we have these, you know, trails developed, one of the things I've noticed, say for example, by a beach, you know, there are people who like to ride by a beach, and that's because it's, it's really beautiful and it's outdoors. Having the trails marked, and that's going to be probably a challenge, you know, to maintain, so that you have somebody running, you have a biker, there could be a curve, nobody gets run over, there aren't accidents out there. So, just making sure that, that they're marked, so that when, you know, somebody goes out there and uses it, there's a jogging trail, there's a bike trail, and that way, it provides some kind of structure for users. And people eventually get used to those structures, you know, once, once they frequent them. And, you know, I appreciate the canoe kayaking and outdoor taxi, you know, water taxi. Going back to my Venice days, back, it was, that was actually pretty cool. I, I, I think that people would, out of West Sacramento would be coming in and, you know, just checking those things out, and it just brings, you know, more, more users from other communities to come in and check it out. And the fishing access is also, I, I see our, you know, folks around here fishing in all different places, as well as, you know, what Commissioner Sternfeld's mentioned, and people are avid fishers in our community, so I think that's a great idea. And, you know, that pretty much concludes my comments and feedback, and I appreciate you bringing this to us, so that we could provide you with some feedback. It's a great opportunity for our community to build some, something really unique to, to West Sacramento, and just continues to beautify our city.
Sure.
Yeah, Ms. Chair.
I had, I just had one more comment that came to mind as, as you were talking about accessibility. You know, one of the things we may want to think about really carefully as we move forward with talking about potential recreation facilities in this area is accessibility for all via ADA.
Yep.
And so, I think that's probably another reason why I would be very strongly supportive of all of our efforts to do a paved trail, because once we have any kind of facilities, whether they're educational or archery, or whatever it end up, may up being, it needs to be accessible for all. And I think, you know, another premise that several of my commissioners would agree with, is that we need to make sure we, that it is accessible for all. And so, you know, I would hate to see these ideas not get off the ground, because they're not fully accessible, or that, or there's an issue created by that. I think one way to go around, to start addressing that issue is, is the paving of the trail. So, whether it's grandmas with strollers, or folks with disabilities who need assistance, or just people who want to ride their bike or rollerblade, I think there's several benefits of having the paved piece there. But I want to bring out the accessible for all piece, because I think it's a important component when we're thinking about access to the riverfront, not just how you get to it, but who can get to it. So, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Good point. Very good point. Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I had, I had one more follow-up. This one was, I think, for, for Greg. And clarification, the, the access roads to the marinas, are those bridged across the levees? Are, are those solid landfill acting as levees themselves?
They're solid landfill acting as levees themselves.
Okay. So, one thing that I, I just caught on to in this presentation is, there's, there's no flow-through from the upper section to the lower section. We actually have two distinct sections, and they fill with water, and then drain out, out those same.
That, that's correct.
Okay. So, that would actually preclude any, well, could preclude any, just straight path along on the flood plain. But also, and this just gets to the flood protection, I understand we're not discussing the whole flood protection project right now, but wouldn't the, wouldn't the flood protection be increased by having flow through that area? And the reason I'm getting at that is, if, if it were to be open, you're actually increasing the flood capacity of the river by increasing flow on the flood plain.
So, well, this could go off and spin off in several different directions, but we had to go round and round with the Army Corps of Engineers because of what are perceived hydraulic impacts to the other side of the river. When we widen the river essentially along the, the segment of the river where our project is, creating a setback levee, in essence, widens the river. When it, after it leaves our project area and narrows, it causes these minimal bumps in the water surface elevation, somewhere on the order of one or two tenths of a foot. But those are considered impacts to others. And so, we had to go through a number of design iterations to minimize those tenths of a foot of increases, temporal increases in water surface elevation, in order to gain approval for the design of this project by the Corps. So, although I might agree with you, it's a very difficult process to go through. The other comment I would make is, when you have long segments of flow-through condition, you can end up with increased velocities. Increased velocities can also cause erosion. And so, by having them separated, and not having long flow-through sections, it helps to minimize the potential for erosion. And then lastly, Bees Lakes is kind of an icon and habitat in and of itself, and to essentially destroy Bees Lakes by creating flow-through condition was something that we just didn't want to tackle.
Okay. I have some additional, but this is not the, the meeting, I think, for that. So, thank you.
Well, Commissioner Trumber?
I think it's, it's rare to have an opportunity to offer suggestions and, and get your voice heard for things you would want in your community. So, I'm going to offer one more, and I don't know if it's even a feasible thing, or if it's appropriate, but I was thinking about a driving range. I think it would be really quite nice out there, but that's just my final suggestion for now.
It's big enough.
Yeah. I mean, from my experience, driving ranges are like, maybe two acres max, and we've got 125. Small percentage.
And that would be in the community sports park area, or?
No, maybe even when we're looking at the inlets, and some of the, the tighter areas.
Okay.
Just a thought.
At this point, all, all suggestions are welcome, and we love having, having that feedback from you. And so, as we move forward, looking at all of the, all of the suggestions, and, and where things can go, it'll give us a better idea of, of how we can design the offset areas to be beneficial for everybody, and, and get everybody back out there, you know, next to the river and enjoying themselves.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you. And I, just before we close, I just want to bring it up for public comment, if, open it up, if there's any, I don't have any requests to speak, or is anybody's interested in speaking? No? Okay. Close the public comment. And I just wanted to thank you very much for the presentation, the opportunity to contribute. So exciting. And I know our residents and their families will be, are looking forward to this.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the zoning administrator interpretation regarding craft distilleries, and that's Ms. Wang, who will be presenting to us. And where will she be presenting us?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Amy Wang to the Planning Commission. She's been an intern in our group for about the last year or so, and she's actually getting ready to graduate from school here in a couple of weeks. But as we like to do, if possible, with all of our interns, is give them as much real-world experience as possible. And so, Amy's here tonight to present this item, which she did do the majority of the research and analysis on it. So, this is Amy.
All right. Thank you, David, for the introduction, and thank you fellow commissioners for having me here tonight. It's a great opportunity to be here. So, the purpose of this item tonight is to consider the ratification of the zoning administrators' interpretation on craft distilleries. And so, it is recommended that the Planning Commission tonight affirm the zoning administrators' recommendation to treat craft distilleries as the same use as breweries, and be permitted and conditionally permitted in the same zones. So, just a little background on craft distilleries, it is basically similar to a brewery where, you know, customers can come in and sample the products produced on site, and can purchase it if they want to. And so, a lot of the past couple of years, this concept has been very popular, and as a result, the Craft Distillers Act was passed, and basically, this act issued a new type of license for the Alcohol Beverage Control Board to distribute, and it is called a Type 74 license. Because this license was just passed and became effective early this year in 2016, Uh, because this license was just passed and became effective early this year in 2016, so our city currently does not have a definition for such use. And so, uh, this item here tonight would be relevant in the future when there's businesses that are interested in, you know, operating their business in the city here. Uh, so going to the analysis part, um, based on the, uh, analysis done, a craft distillery is a very new concept, so they're mainly operated as a startup company, and so because of that, the, the scale of operation would generally be pretty small, and so they would want to operate in areas where rent is relatively more affordable, so that would be places such as business parks in comparison to the more, uh, central areas. And in addition, um, Type 74 license imposes, uh, several restrictions on the craft distilleries. Uh, most importantly, it has a limitation on the consumption per customer per day, and that is 1.5 ounces of liquor per customer per day. And if you want more information on this type of license, Type 74 license, you can look at the FAQ page, it has more additional details just concerning the license. And so with the limitation of the license and the land use in mind, um, basically the purpose of the sampling is just for, you know, people to go there and then taste it for off-site consumption if they want to purchase the products. And so with this, all the limitation and the location in mind, it would not cause any nuisance to the local neighborhood. And the second alternative to this, uh, would be to categorize this use as undefined, uh, meaning that they would require a conditional use permit. Uh, this option means that every single, uh, craft distillery would be under, subject under, uh, staff review, which would prolong the process, uh, which may discourage, uh, business owners from coming into the city to operate if they have to, you know, go through additional process. And the last alternative would be to amend the zoning code. This alternative would take the longest time as there are several processes that are involved in amending a zoning code, and even if it is amended, we would basically be adding content that is very similar, if not identical, to the existing content concerning breweries. And so in conclusion, it is recommended that the Planning Commission affirm the zoning administrator's, uh, interpretation on viewing, uh, craft distillery as breweries. And that is the end of my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them to the best of my knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wang, and are there any questions to my left, Commissioner Leibig, for Ms. Wang?
Sorry, uh, thank you, Amy, I found that very helpful presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelter?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, one quick one, uh, Amy. The first option, uh, we refer to as conditional and permitted by right, uh, in the same zones as breweries.
Yes.
I'm not sure, and, you know, not being a planner myself, I'm not sure how the word conditional is being used in this context. I think of permission by right as not requiring conditions. Am I wrong about that?
Um, so if you look at the zoning matrix attached, um, it lists the zones that are permitted.
Right.
And then in the business park zone, it says conditional, so.
Uh-huh.
If that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Trumber? Thank you for your presentation. Uh, despite your presentation and your excellent report, I am having a little bit of a, of a challenge visualizing the, the, uh, the business.
Mm-hmm.
So, when I'm comparing it to a brewery, our breweries in town have, well, four of them have, um, or is it three or four, they have a, a, the brewery as well as a, as a tasting room, I mean, or more or less, you know, you go and you, you buy a couple beers and you, you hang out for a little bit.
Right.
Um, it's my, it's my guess that that's not what we're doing here, so what we're doing here is offering the opportunity for up to one and a half ounces.
Mm-hmm.
Throughout a 24-hour period for tasting.
Right.
But there's not an opportunity to purchase and sit and mingle and hang out, is that, is that correct?
Um, oh, you can purcha, you can purchase the products for off-site consumption, so, um, yeah, that's the limit, and I guess in terms of like entertainment, that would depend on like the certain projects specifically, so I wouldn't be too sure about like the entertainment aspect.
Well, it's, I'm not necessarily asking about the entertainment, I'm, I'm mostly asking because then, if, if there was an opportunity similar, similar to what we have with the breweries, if there's an opportunity for craft distilleries which are, are crafting liquor, I mean, if, if they were also having that, it almost seems like it would be, that would require a liquor license, and they would be operating more like a bar. Um, that's, so visually, I'm having a hard time distinguishing the two.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are, there's definitely some analogous, analogous mark per to the breweries we have in town, but there is important distinction is that, um, you know, these distilleries have this one and a half ounce, you know, limit. Um, I'm not aware of the breweries in town having any comparable type limits, and so it's, it's not likely that, you know, someone could go, would go and hang out for a few hours here like they might at one of the breweries, because, you know, one and a half ounces isn't too terribly much. Um, but i- it is a similar concept where they have a ma, primarily a manufacturing, in this case, distilling onsite, um, but could have some accessory availability to, um, for tasting and then home-based, home purchase. Uh, but this 1.5 ounce limit is, is, is fairly strict, I think, in our, in our view. Um, it does separate them from some of the other, the brewery concepts that we have right now.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna also just mention that breweries and wineries don't have a limit on how much you can sample, and so I guess you could stay there as long as you want, but there is a limit, so it depends, I guess, if you, how long you want to stay there.
I understand, it's a different type of tasting experience.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Moore?
I guess my question is, if we're trying to do this Type 74 license, and I'm looking at the matrix, which one is that?
Oh, a brew, brewery?
I thought we just said the brewery was the one that we could go drink all the beer we wanted at.
Oh, well, um, yeah, they, the, they themselves, because, I guess, because of the alcohol content difference, so, um, breweries, you don't have like a sampling limit, but for distilleries, you would have a limit on how much you can.
Why would we put them both in the same metrics then? Why wouldn't you have two separate ones? If a brewery is the same thing as the Type 74, why wouldn't you separate them on your matrix?
Uh, we're proposing in this to, from, as a land use, to allow them in the same, in the same zones as the way the breweries are. Um, you know, they're not, they're not totally apples, apples and apples, but from a land use standpoint, um, we do find that they are comparable, and thus the zones where we do allow breweries and wineries, either conditionally or principally permitted, the proposal would be to allow the distilleries in the same manner.
So we're just trying to say it's similar to a brewery, but it's totally different, and we just put it, it gets classified as the same? Which, I mean, was something we were talking about at the last brewery that came in, that, you know, if it goes into certain zones, you should just be able to approve.
Yeah, I mean, this, this really would be an interim measure until we, you know, get, we'll go more comprehensive, we'll work on the zoning ordinance, and at that point in time, we'd probably put it in there as a separate line item, um, but that's, that's a ways away, so in the interim, since we, you know, we are, we have received at least some general inquiries along this line, we wanted to bring this forward if, to see if the Planning Commission was comfortable in this manner, um, at this point. Otherwise, we can go with the other options that, um, that are in Amy's staff report.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sternfeld.
Uh, Ms. Wang, thank you for your presentation, I think you did an excellent job. If you wouldn't mind me asking a bit of a personal question, if you could share, uh, where you're going to school right now?
Oh, uh, yes, of course. Um, so I'm currently a fourth-year environmental policy analysis and planning major at UC Davis, and so I'm graduating in a month, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
In addition to saying congratulations, let me say you did an excellent job in both your preparation and your presentation of this item.
Thank you.
And I think the city's very lucky to have had you and the work that you've done here.
Thank you again.
I really, uh, I, I want to just kind of bring up one point that I think is important, and David, I, I thank you for mentioning it earlier, and that is, um, recognizing that this is a new industry, I'm comfortable temporarily, uh, kind of putting it in the same basket as we would a brewery or a winery, but that being said, um, I have a hard time coming to terms with the idea that we're not willing to open the zoning code to make this change, very specifically after we just opened the zoning code to make a change for another business type. Um, and I think if one, if we have one job more than anything else, we should be treating every, every case the same. Um, I recognize that part of doing this, uh, in this manner quickly is because we have, you know, opportunities that the city wants to take advantage of, but in the same token, if this is going to be, uh, an area where we are seeing increased interest and want to be able to, to create a land use designation for, we should go ahead and take those steps to, to open the zoning code, and let's make the definition. Um, I understand that the brewery definition and the winery definition that are in the zoning code are pretty much exactly the same, they both have the same land use matrix, so copying that a third time and adding it for, for distilleries, um, while I appreciate and recognize that it's a workload, uh, and requires several steps and, with both us and, and the council, um, I, I think if this is legitimate and we really want to support this industry, we need to make it super clear to this industry how we're regulating them and, uh, and, uh, issue more public transparency than anything, you know, one of the few ways we share what we do and how we do it is through our zoning code, so if I'm a member of the public and I don't call the city, I'm just looking, I would not know that else, that we've made this decision tonight unless I called the city and asked, how do you, how do you, uh, how do you look at, uh, craft distillery? Do you look at it the same way you look at a brewery? I see brewery in your zoning code, I see winery in your zoning code, but I don't see craft distillery, and so I think at some point we need to make that clarity. I appreciate Mr. Tilly sharing that we will, um, but I would, I would kind of, I, I give a slight bit of pause, um, not that I'm uncomfortable with what we're doing, but in the fact that, you know, the, the rationale is that it takes too much time, or it's going to take some time, and we're, we're gonna do that later, um, because we just did this for a different business type and created a definition for a different business type and opened the zoning code for that, so. I recognize it's a very different circumstance, and I, I appreciate that completely, but in the same token, um, you know, let's, let's do the work and make it clear if, if we're serious about, you know, creating this industry type and, and offering it as a conditional use.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Wang, I, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
And, um, also, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners that you have done an excellent job with your presentation.
Thank you.
And you're very clear, very professional, well-done, and, uh, you know, excited that you're gonna be graduating here pretty soon, and that we had you here in our city working with us, so we were very fortunate.
Yeah, it's been a great opportunity.
Yeah, you were here for about a year, right?
Uh, yes.
Oh, good, good, that's great, we were lucky.
Thank you.
And, um, I, I wanted to take into consideration that, you know, since we have a, a separate ordinance, um, that is going to be, um, put in place down the road, um, and two questions, one, a timeline, and two, maybe a sunset, uh, date for, um, this particular interpretation, so that we can reevaluate our position. Um, so just the timeline for the separate ordinance, what does, it's, like you said, far down the road, do you have an idea how far down the road?
Um, well, my goal is to do a pretty significant zoning ordinance modernization as a implementation measure of the General Plan 2035, and, um, was, there was even a line item in the, um, budget matters that the council discussed, you know, last night, um, regarding that, but, um, I would not expect that to start until probably the back half, you know, easily the back half of this year, and, um, you know, that could be a lengthy endeavor depending on how much we want to throw out and redo versus modify, but my goal has been to, um, try to let go of what we've all been used to and to try to really force a modernization, so that, you know, that could be, that could be a lengthy endeavor, I could think that could take at least a year, um, after, to finish.
Okay.
Um, maybe, maybe a little bit longer depending on how deep we get into it.
Okay, um, well, that's, that's very helpful, and it sounds, well, and my next question is, do we have any other, um, similar type of actions that we've taken on a temporary basis until, you know, these, you know, by that, we're gonna make some changes in the general plan that, you know, that happens?
Yeah, when, we bring these zoning administrator interpretations, you know, to, you know, at least usually about once, once a year or thereabouts, um, usually they all, usually we ultimately fold them into an overall zoning ordinance update the next time that rolls around, and typically we have done that yearly, but since we have the general plan pending, um, and we know we want to do a much broader look at the zoning ordinance, we really aren't doing some of these smaller tweaks, um, you know, right now, uh, but it's, it is something we can easily do, um, you know, we can look at this again in six months.
Okay.
Um, if you want to, um, we, there's no distilleries that are imminent, you know, right now, we've had a couple of inquiries, but they've been, you know, you know, fairly, you know, low-key.
Okay.
So, uh, I don't mind, you know, looking at this later this year again, if, especially if one does come to town and look serious.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but for now, we're trying, wanting to get a little bit ahead of this, um, you know, in case that, you know, this does, one of these does materialize.
Okay, um, let me think here, I, I think part of, um, what I understood from Commissioner Sternfeld, if you, if you can help clarify, is that, um, something like this would, um, require, you know, um, you know, a craft distillery to really have to look more closely as to whether or not they, they can consider placing a business, and something a little more transparent, a little more, a little more clarity, and, and our, um, codes is preferable. Now, doing something like that, um, would take a little more time, I understand.
Well, there's some costs associated with that as well, but given that this, you know, craft distillery license has only been on the books since January of this year, my presumption is that most cities probably do not have this codified in their zoning, um, really anywhere yet, so, um, at this time, we can at least, you know, take this step so that when we do have inquiries on it, we can give them a definitive answer as to how we would treat them.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Um, I, I think, you know, my recommendation, so your recommendation here is do you want to, do you, would you recommend that we wait on taking any action until six months, or take action and review it again in six months?
Yeah, our recommendation would be that you act on this tonight, and then we will bring it back to you at some point in the future that you determine.
That we decide on, okay.
And if there's anything to report, we'll report, and if there isn't anything, then it's just sort of, you know, moot.
All righty. Commissioner Leibig, yes?
Um, I appre, I appreciate it, and just for clarification on my behalf, um, as far as a land use, our action tonight permits it on the same basis as a brewery. Um, the only thing that's missing is the word "distillery" in the table, so.
Okay.
So, our action tonight does, does permit it. With that, I, I'm more interested in, in waiting to address the zoning to make sure that we actually address it as a whole package, because I, I would like to make other, other modifications to it, um, not just for the distillery. That said, I, I'm comfortable moving forward with it as the same use as a, as a brewery. Did, did I just talk in a circle, was that clear?
No, that actually, I thought was, I put it all together.
Maybe Mr. Tilly can interpret it for me.
Well, I, I mean, opening up the zoning ordinance, even for a minor change, um, is a lengthy endeavor based on just how ordinances have to be adopted, and hearing here, hearing at council.
Right.
Sometimes we have to go to the chamber on, on those, so it, it is a lengthy endeavor, and it's somewhat costly endeavor. So, um, when we're gonna do that, we might, if we're gonna do that, we might as well not just open it up for one little thing, we might as well look at a lot of other stuff, and then, before you know it, it can, kind of snowballs a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we would recommend we move forward with this now, but then when we do look at zoning ordinance, um, in larger context, we can look at this, and you want to ma, make some changes to it, and maybe that's when we make the stuff on the breweries that, you know, you mentioned at our, one of our previous meetings, uh, when the revision guys were here.
Okay.
So, um, so there's gonna be an opportunity for that, um, we're just recommending that we not engage in that right now.
Okay, so is that, are you okay with moving forward with this, Commissioner Leibig?
I'm, I'm actually perfectly okay with it, I was hoping to, um, actually just bring clarification and.
Thank you.
Uh, maybe dissuade the six-month timeline.
Dissuade, okay.
I, I would be more interested in giving staff flexibility to bring this back as a larger package.
Okay.
Uh, than to force, uh, or to rush something.
I agree.
And go for something more of this, a slim revision.
And do you, um, recommend any modifications, um, to, you know, to the land use matrix or anything?
Well, tonight, I don't believe we can make any modifications to the land use matrix.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons that I would prefer to.
But you'll recommend one.
When this comes back, let's.
Sure.
When this comes back, let's, let's address it as a full package.
Okay, good. And maybe, maybe have a workshop in advance before so we can all become familiar with.
Yeah. And in the meantime, you know, we'll learn more about how these are operating in the real world. Someone is, you know, I'm, I'm not aware if there is one around this region as of yet.
As waders.
But there's bound, there's bound to be one sooner or later, I'm sure. And so we'll gain, gain a little more knowledge once one does.
Commission field trip.
I've wadered one in, in class.
As long as that is properly noticed, I have no problem with that.
Oh, yeah. There you go. Okay. Any other questions from our, the commissioners? And none? Okay, I will, yes, Commissioner Kelcher.
Madam Chair, I'll move that.
Can we hold on for one moment? I just wanted to open up for public comment. I don't have any request to speak, but I do want to take, take that into consideration first. Thank you. I will open it up for public comment. I don't see any request to speak at this moment, so I will close the public comment and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move that the Planning Commission affirmed the zoning administrator's interpretation that a craft distillery is considered the same, I think I would insert the word "land," so considered the same land use as a brewery.
Okay. Second?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Tomber seconds. Commissioner Kelcher moved. All in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any no's? No? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Wang. Great job. Yes. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the resolution of 16-3P C recommending approval of amendments to the wireless telecommunications facility policy. Mr. Laffey, you're back on this.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. The proposed amendments to the wireless policy up for your consideration tonight are similar to the changes staff brought for the commission last month in a workshop format for comment and discussion, with some changes made since the last draft to incorporate comments made from the planning commission. So as discussed in the workshop last month, the proposed amendments to the wireless policy up for your consideration tonight are primarily in response to AB 52 and AB 57. Taken together, these two laws could pose significant challenges when reviewing wireless projects not exempt from CEQA. Because one law shortens the time available to review the application and the other adds additional requirements, increasing the time it takes to prepare an environmental document. So there are seven amendments to the policy proposed tonight. The first three are related to AB 52 and AB 57. So these three are related to AB 52 and AB 57. The first is a cultural resource report, and these would be additions to what's required for an applicant when they want to construct a wireless facility. The second is a discussion of all ground disturbance in conjunction with the project. And the third is a public workshop before planning commission to receive preliminary feedback. All right, next one. So the other four additions proposed are not related to AB 52 or AB 57, and they are more design-related. So the first one is in addition to the minimum application requirements, and that is for photo simulations from two angles for each proposed design. And the second is multiple contextual design options. And number two, this was reworded from the draft presented to the commission last month and has been shortened from what it was previously, and now contains the word "contextual." So the proposed additions to section J, the first is that wireless facilities, lease areas and ground equipment shall be screened by an aesthetically pleasing and durable material such as wrought iron or CMU block. And then also chain link fencing is not permitted. That was an addition from what was presented at the last meeting at the planning commissioner's request. And then also bar and/or razor wire is not permitted. It's also proposed. So staff is recommending approval of resolution 16-3P PC for this item tonight. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Laffey. Any, to my right, Commissioner Moore, do you have any questions?
You know, I, I don't have a question, but I have a, a comment. Now, we talked about the chain link fence and the razor wire in a residential type area, and it was really at the Norcal Beverage site. I mean, I don't, I don't care to see it, but I'm just wondering if we say it's not permitted, how you protect some of the sites that are just out in Never Never Land, you know?
And there is a provision that they could do a CMU block wall or some other sort of fence like a wrought iron. It's something a little more aesthetically pleasing than just a chain link.
I agree. It's more pleasing. I'm just trying to think, you know, if you have something that just is not around anything at all, if it's feasible to do that. Of course, we could put it underground too, which is what we talked about.
Right.
You know? It's just a comment. I just, I'm not sure how it works when you're clear out in the country to have an aesthetically pleasing site that people can break into. I just, you have to, you have to make it safe too.
Mm-hmm.
And I just don't know if you can make it safe by just having a block wall. I, I don't know. I'm just, I would prefer never to see a, a chain link fence or razor wire. I think it's just not very nice to see in a city. But I'm just hoping that when we say this, that there's, you know, a better alternative for them to protect their equipment.
Yeah, there, there are numerous different design options out there that we can employ that could provide security with hopefully not, you know, the old-fashioned razor wire.
Yeah, it'd be better. It'd look nicer. But that's okay. The fellow on the far left will talk about it.
Commissioner Sternfeld?
Thank you for all your hard work on this. I think we've made several significant improvements that will help us guide our decisions moving forward and, and make it clear for everyone on the front end what our goals are from how things look in contextualization of, of how we design these facilities. So I'm happy to make a motion at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tomber?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Kelcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the proposal for H1-N and wondering if, if I understood the statute correctly, we can't require a public meeting to be held in conjunction with the application. That we can only require that notice be given. And this doesn't seem consistent with that to me unless I'm misunderstanding the statute.
Well, we can go back and take a look at that, but that's not my recollection of how the statute was worded. I don't have it in front of me. However, I don't think we have the statutory language here. Well, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, I'm looking at the staff report. Very top of page two, the deemed approval provision makes no exceptions for required public meetings.
Right. That has to do with no exceptions as in it doesn't, it doesn't pause the shot clock because of public meetings.
Right.
So it doesn't mean you can't have them. It just means the clock continues to run.
So how would our proposal then?
Because this has to happen before the application is determined to be complete. So the, the clock begins to run when the application is complete. What we're adding is a requirement that there be a workshop prior to the application being determined to be complete.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying and it doesn't.
You have, you're pausing over the same thing I paused over, which is, are we honoring the words and, and not honoring the spirit? And I think that's probably a question that may be raised at some point, but it does seem to us to comply with the literal language in the statute.
Okay.
And so that's the recommendation.
Well, you said it much better than I did, so thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Kelcher? No? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Leibig?
Thank you. And thanks, thank you staff for proactively planning this. I just had one clarification question and then one other general question. On section J, structural design and environmental standards, number nine, in the staff report and in the policy, says wireless facilities, lease areas and ground equipment shall be screened by something. I think this gets to the definition maybe of wireless facilities. We're not screening a tower or the pole itself. Is, is the wireless facility just the ground equipment or, and then the lease area? We're, we're not actually, how to say this? They may be leasing more of an area than is being used by the tower and by the ground equipment. So are we just screening the ground equipment? And can, should we, should we include wireless facilities and lease areas? Or can we just start that sentence with "ground equipment shall be screened"?
Let me see.
That's a question. It could be for Seamus or, or the commissioners, but it looks like Seamus might have something to say.
Yeah, I was gonna say that normally the lease area encompasses the whole thing. So maybe we, it could be reworded just to say just the lease area is screened. But this was worded this way to encompass everything. And it's, it'd be the base of the wireless facility, not, you know, you wouldn't have to screen obviously the whole, whole tower to be the, the base structure.
The ground equipment is really the most critical thing, I think, for this particular portion. There's a lot of the radio cabinets, telco, all kinds of things coming in. The base of these towers is kind of a mess. And so, and those are typically enclosed. So this is mostly getting at how would be it be enclosed.
Can I make a suggestion? The sentence could be "ground equipment shall be screened." Period. Screening, all screening shall be by an aesthetically pleasing something or other. That way, if they do want, wish to add or need to have additional fencing, it allows for it and prescribes what type it is.
Can you read the entire sentence then? So?
As, as I was just proposed. Ground equipment shall be screened.
Oh, so they would, so, and, okay, so then you would take, so that's number J9?
J9, right.
And then so you would take out all of wireless facilities, lease areas, and then start with "ground equipment shall be screened"?
Yeah, but it would be "ground equipment shall be screened."
And that's it?
Period. And then "all screening will be by an aesthetically pleasing and durable material such as wrought iron or CMU block. Chain link fencing is not prohibited."
Okay.
I would just break it up as a possible way to allow screening, but not require it for a lease area. Maybe, maybe they're doing something like they have additional landscaping or something within their lease area.
I see. Yeah, okay.
Unless I'm not getting the definition of lease area correct.
Yeah, so if we, if we just had the ground equipment screened, maybe we might want to find what the ground equipment is, whether it's the base of the tower, including, is that, is that part of the ground equipment? Or is it just kind of the, the little boxes they have off the side? So this was worded to encompass everything, not just one specific aspect of the, the lease area.
Seamus, could I come back with this? Because this is kind of what I was talking about. Sometimes they lease property and we go right back to our water tank that we put behind Vickers. Vickers has all got, their whole site has a chain link fence with probably bob wire on top. It's what they are. But the facility could be different. And I think that's what Russ is talking about, you know? I mean, if you get into a facility that you've leased, I mean, you can't ask the whole facility. It could be a 20-acre site and they have a little corner piece. You don't want to change the whole site, do you?
Yeah, I think the Vickers example is a good one because that they lease a small portion of that larger property. We're only looking, we only look to get their ground equipment area at the base of the tower, you know, in an enclosure, which they typically want to have an enclosure anyway. It's not now, nor is it ever meant to be like the entire property.
Right.
Here. It's, it's really what the cell tower leases, which is a small part.
And that's, that's what I'm going for, is, is that ground equipment area, if, if this says it accurately, then, then I'm good with it.
I think if it just says "ground equipment shall be screened," et cetera, et cetera, that could cover it. Because that is really what we're trying to get to here is the ground equipment.
So, so when I read this, I, I read it to think lease equipment meant in a case where you have a facility that has multiple tenants, leased equip, like leased space for another tenant. So that, that was, when I read this, that was the interpretation that came to mind was you had the, the wireless facility, you had the ground equipment, and then any additional space that was reserved for another tenant, like leased space within, for that wireless facility would also be enclosed. But maybe that was just my singular interpretation.
Yeah, it was usually the way it goes on these when you have a, you know, a tower owner that's leasing out space to the carriers. Each carrier has their own little separate area for their equipment that's within the overall lease area that the tower owner leases from the property owner. So usually those are all, it's all enclosed, you know, with sort of one, you know, CMU wall, even though each carrier has its own, you know, separate pieces of equipment. I wouldn't expect to see, you know, several, several little separate pods that are each have their own wall around them.
Right.
And usually that stuff is, you know, pretty tight at the base anyway. So if we can get, if we can get the ground equipment, you know, in the enclosure, then we should be well on our way.
Okay.
I'm, I'm actually flexible on this one. I am not married to a change at all. So I'll leave it up to the commission whether or not they feel it's worthwhile. If not, I think it's probably sufficient. The way it's written, it means that the structure would also need to have a, a wall around it and a wall or a fence. Probably for safety reasons, we probably want to have that. Safety or, and/or security. The lease area and ground equipment seems to be interpreted as almost the same thing. So as written, I could be sold on it.
Okay.
Unless there's any strong opinion. I have one more question.
Yes.
So, so this is the second time that we've seen the policy and there were some other comments made last time that were not included in, in this revision. And unfortunately, I had thrown away my notes from our last meeting. So, so you, so you get a complete buy on this. But I'm just wondering.
Or not.
What, what were those, if you know, just generally? And, and are we tracking those?
Certainly endeavored to capture in here everything from our last discussion. And I apologize if we, if we didn't. I don't have my notes in front of me either. I, I must admit that our, in doing this, our goal was to try to keep this as simple as possible because, you know, we're, this is something we've decided to do on our own because, you know, frankly, we think we need to because of these laws that have been passed. And so we were trying to keep this moving forward. So we have it in place before, before the next cell tower comes to us. The last one that we were looking at on Stone Boulevard scared us a little bit because we really felt the commission was going to be up against that shot clock and sort of be forced to make a decision. That's never what the situation we ever want you to be in. So I don't mind continuing to work on this and bringing it back at another time or a separate change for additional, additional stuff that we may have missed.
Well, I think this was, again, very good start. It, it upgraded our plan and modernized it. But the, the sentence in here that caught my attention was "some of the comments will require some more substantial research and review, and staff will include these in a further and more comprehensive wireless update in the near future." And I honestly don't know what those were. And that's, that's.
There is a discussion in the background section about what those comments were.
Okay.
The, the middle paragraph, the larger one.
Okay. Oh, so they were not commission's comments? That's, that's what I thought you were saying, was that you couldn't address all of the commission's comments. And so it appears that, I'm missing it. And so it appears that, I'm missing it.
So this goes beyond Commission's comments, then?
Oh, no, you were, I'm sorry. So you're talking about the paragraph that starts on April 21st? Okay, I'm sorry. I went for the other middle paragraph. Okay, gotcha. I did read that. Thank you. That's it. Those were all my comments.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Oh, yes, Commissioner Kelter, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm still stuck on something. Could we not, if we're concerned about a project not being exempt from SEQA, but not having enough time to permit a complete SEQA analysis to be done, if a project is not exempt, isn't an application without that analysis incomplete by definition?
Well, normally, once an applicant, we would start the environmental review when we have all the information that's required for the environmental review.
But the applicant knows before applying whether he's going to be exempt from SEQA or not, doesn't he?
No, that's determined by us when we look through the application. So they would either fall into one of the categorical or statutory exemptions, and if they don't meet the requirements for one of those, then we would do an initial study.
But don't applicants typically do that before they apply and they know what you're going to say?
We may have an idea, but it's not the applicant's decision, it's our decision.
Right.
And we may not know until a full application is in
So if they, so you have to declare that the application is complete so that you can rule on whether or not it's exempt from SEQA?
Well, yeah, we like to have as much information as possible. Yeah.
Okay. That explains it. Thank you.
All right. No other questions? Mr. Laffey, thank you very much for this report. It was very helpful as I read it and found that your recommendations were great. And seeing that we have some challenges coming up ahead and with the shot clock, I think that some of these recommendations are going to help us facilitate putting together our recommendations and the planning of this so that we don't fall out of compliance and end up with something we don't like in our, in our community. And, you know, seeing that, I think Commissioner Leibig is okay with the language as it is.
Yes.
Good, okay. I'm gonna just open it up for public comment, just for the sake of doing that. At this point, there's nobody in the audience, so I'm gonna close it back up again. And bring it back to either additional discussion or a motion to approve the recommended action from the staff.
Chair? I'd like to motion that we certify the Planning Commission has reviewed and considered the proposed categorical, or class five categorical exemption and adopts the exemption as presented by staff and approve Resolution 16-3 P.C. recommending that City Council approve the proposed changes to the wireless telecommunications facilities policy.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kelter, who seconded?
Oh, I did, apparently.
Commissioner Leibig seconded?
Sorry, I didn't need to talk over
All in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? Moved unanimously. We will now move on to our informal discussion. Are there any comments in our informal discussion? No?
I would, I would, I'll hold. I know you want to go, but I would like to again point out that I did not receive or use a paper packet for this evening's meeting, and it went extraordinarily well for me. I enjoyed it, and I thank staff for appreciating my request to not deliver a packet and hope that that gave them an extra five minutes at home with their family.
I was excited to see my packet by the door.
Me too.
I write, I write a lot of notes on it to help me remember, you know, things that come to mind as I'm, you know, thinking about what I'm going to ask, and so it really does help me to have it in a hard copy.
We will continue to do it in this manner. We just ask that the Commissioners, you know, just remain consistent on their preference. But Katie is more than happy to not deliver a packet if it's not required.
And I'd be more than happy to pick it up here from the office if it gives Katie an extra five minutes with her family. All right. At this time, I guess we will
Oh, I wanted to
Oh, yes, Chair, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I know that the city had, some staff of the city had sent us an email, but I don't believe we're meeting again before the Bridgeway, Bridgeway Play, at the playground at Bridgeway Lakes, at our park, they're opening, I believe it's next Saturday. So it was such a great effort. It's the 28th, yes. It was such a great effort by just moms in the community, and we're all going to benefit, especially me. I'm like a hop, skip, and a jump away, so we're really excited, and I hope that some of the Commission members can make it there. Unfortunately, I can't. I'll be out of town. It was planned months and months ago, so I'm so sad about it, but I'm very excited for the park to come into our neighborhood, and I really, of course, would like to commend the group that put forward the efforts in fundraising.
And I agree. I appreciate our City Council acknowledging all the hard work as a community, putting that together, the fundraising efforts in their State of the City meeting. And also congratulate all of the other awardees of the State of the City for receiving their, there's quite a few that did that day, and it was quite, it was a great event. Lots of initiatives by our mayor that are coming up in the city, so, thank you.
Yes. Any other comments?
Here, here.
Meeting is adjourned.